To the June ninth for a Falls City Council meeting, first thing we'll do is state a pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands.
Stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible.
Invisible. With liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll go on to a roll call with Christie, please.
Beerstead.
Here.
Downing.
Here.
Gagne.
Here.
Morissette. Morissette. Mr. Morissette.
I got muted somehow, I apologize, I'm here.
Dean.
Here.
Plunkett.
Here.
Watson.
Here.
Thank you.
Next move up, approval of the the May 12th workshop minutes, the May 26th board review minutes, and the May 26 regular meeting minutes.
I move approval.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next we have approve bills with Mr. Morissette.
The council approve, I make a motion, we approve the bills in the amount of nine hundred fifty-six thousand, eight hundred, I'm sorry, six hundred eighty-nine dollars and two cents, subject to the comptroller.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next move on to public comments now. John, is there people at City Hall for public comments?
Yes, there are a few folks here.
Okay.
Can you hear me all right?
Yep, here and seeing just fine.
I can't turn that voice off. As far as it goes. Just be sure to speak clearly. All right, who's our first person? Go ahead.
Hello, everybody, it's nice to see you. My name is Elizabeth Boden, I'm a River Falls resident, and I just wanted to make a public comment about the state of our nation and some concerns in our community. Weeks ago, demonstrations began in response to the violent death of citizens at the hands of police. Last week on Thursday evening, there was a demonstration in solidarity with Black Lives Matter, mourning the death of Mr. George Floyd. To date, to my knowledge, there has not been a statement from the police department. Perhaps the resolution last on the council agenda is addressing this, however, I wanted to speak on record. As stated on their website, River Falls Police Department is committed to working in partnership with the community, and their aim is to provide quality police service while working towards solutions to contemporary community problems. Their mission statement includes to protect with courage and serve with compassion. While racism is not new, it is an extremely problematic contemporary issue, and we need the understanding that this community is safe and welcoming with love and justice for all. I hope the police department have the courage to make a compassionate statement to the community at said demonstration last Thursday where there were over a hundred people. I spoke to sixty-six citizens that signed a statement asking the River Falls Police Department to publicly condemn the tactics used against Mr. George Floyd in Minneapolis, and also asking for a public statement against racist and/or abusive behavior, as well as a commitment ensuring officer investigation and full accountability should such action occur. Thank you.
Thanks, Elizabeth. Okay, who's next?
Hi, I have a comment on De Sanctus Park, and I don't know if it's appropriate to talk now or to wait till it comes up for...
No, go ahead, talk now.
Okay, so...
Please state your name.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Please state your name again.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Patricia LaRue, I live at four eight nine Marcela Court. Can you guys hear me okay with the mask on? Okay. The RFP three sixty responded to our request that their philosophy offers a transparent approach of our development process through community meetings, open forums, and numerous conversations with neighbors and other stakeholders, giving them a shared voice. They also said it's one of our fundamental principles that each development must positively impact the community and neighbors, the neighborhood where the project is located. So that's where the comments are coming from. I had been asked to provide a little background on De Sanctus Park, if not for you guys, for the public, and that is Pete and Sue De Sanctus are the proud parents of four boys. Their second boy became ill and was misdiagnosed for several weeks until it was determined he had meningitis. He was taken to the hospital and he stayed for many months, and he came out of it very handicapped. I'm sorry, because they were neighbors of mine. Anyway, when Sue and Pete were going through this, they would come home and neighbors would put ten dollars in their mailbox, so they had gas money. We brought them food, we watched the other boys while Ryan was going through his problem. But Saint Bridges Church chipped in. So there was a medical malpractice case, which they were successful at, and then giving back to the community of River Falls, they purchased the land that we now call De Sanctus Park. And it was meant for a park, a passive park, that doesn't mean you can't have volleyball and basketball, et cetera, but no tournaments, no baseball tournaments, et cetera. They kept this seven acres that's now becoming the De Sanctus Park development. And we're very happy that they were able to sell it, I don't know where it was, but we are very happy that they were able to sell it and get some profit out of it after they couldn't sell it to single residential. But going with what three sixty, obviously, they haven't had a chance, it's not their fault, to meet with us, to talk with us, to find out the community, what they thought about this project. So in talking with people that I have, one of the main concerns is the location of each of the buildings. The building's right now the most eastern building, so the closest to town, is setting closer to the park and away from Division Street, which puts it in direct line of three existing people who've been there forever. They can no longer see the park because of how far out that building goes. We understand the aesthetics of staggering the buildings, but if they should... Oh, I'm sorry. If we could pull back the most eastern building closest to Division Street and put the second building closer to the park, then that gives them a better view of the existing neighbors, gives them a better view of the park that they've they've lived on for so long. The other issue, there's a couple, there's people here to talk to, is extending Roosevelt Street as an outlet, as a secondary outlet to our neighborhood. My fear is if we successfully develop the Sanctus Park into a regional park, and we add eighty new apartments, people will start going down through the park, down Roosevelt Street, to get to, I don't know, Walgreens or the other side of town. So you've got children playing, and now you've developed a pathway for cars to go through, which right now is pretty safe. You constantly see people walking the dogs, walking strollers with children, children on bikes, making their way down Sunset and Roosevelt to get to the park. And now what you're, by opening that road up, you would be inviting people in the new apartments plus others to cut through there and to make it to the other side of town. The third thing and last thing, I understand that the engineers have looked at the corner of what's going to be Dry Run, Bob White, and Division Street, and have determined that we don't need any traffic signals there. But I wish they, if they could look at further down, maybe Winter and Division, right now Winter and Division can get pretty clustered, and I think if we have a four-way stop sign there, because we're going to be adding a lot of traffic coming from these apartments to town, and right now Division Street has the right of way, you can really back people up on Winter Street. So maybe if the engineers would consider putting a four-way stop in there. That, I'm done. Oh, and thank you.
Oh, thank you, Patricia.
Neil Gilbertson, River Falls, Wisconsin. I'm right on Division Street, right across from De Sanctus Park. I think it's, your people kind of reckon everything with traffic coming from the cities, looking off to the left, seeing that nice park, all that green area you're supposed to have, then all the traffic coming there, and people going to move in, they're going to have kids, you've got to build a school, did you talk to the disposal plant? Disposal plant's going to be, everybody's going to get up in the morning, flush the toilet, you've got to build on the disposal plant, then you've got to return electricity on, you're going to have, you've got to buy electricity from Madison Place, so the price goes up. What I'm getting at is, I think, we'll make a lot of money on this? I don't think so. If you take common sense, it's going to cost a lot of money. Take care of this, and then everybody wants a green area, green area. There's nothing prettier coming to River Falls, looking off to your left and see that nice park, now the kids down there at the playground, and that's cool. You guys are racking it, period. You think you're going to make money on it? We're going to pay. Thank you. Neil Gilbertson, you're going to call, call me anytime, I'll try to explain a little better, come and talk to you guys.
Thanks, Neil. Anybody else?
Good evening, Mayor and council members, I'm Mark Spafford, just down the road from Neil and right off kitty corner across from Patricia on Division Street on De Sanctus Park. And yeah, so my, my comments tonight are about the resolution approving the general development of De Sanctus Town Home Style Apartments. And so what I, what I would like to talk about is first, about a year ago or so, we came to, a lot of people from that area came, that are right on, on De Sanctus Park, came to the city council to discuss their concern that there were going to be eighteen to twenty homes put right in behind us in the east end of the park. And it was development number three, certain house or something like that, and, and successfully that was turned away, and this other choice of developing the seven acres along, along Division was, was implemented. So that part we do thank you about. I won't say the exact same things that Patricia already talked about, but those are some concerns, especially for my neighbor Josh and Jessica that are going to be butted right up to that first apartment. That is a concern, because they're going to be looking right off the deck, right into some of the windows. And if that apartment could be kicked back closer to Division, that that would allow more of a better sight distance past that apartment. The other thing that, the field of work that I'm in is roads and bridges, and I have had a concern since we moved into River Falls about twenty-three years ago with Division Street. And I don't know if any of you remember the, the issue that I had with our, our previous police chief, Roger, where he stood up in the council meeting and he said that, because I was, I was complaining about the traffic speed, coming and going out of town, and he stood up during the meeting, the council meeting, and he just point-blank said that he didn't feel that that speed was the appropriate speed, so he was telling his police officers not to be in that area, and not write tickets. And the mayor at the time told him something different that night. He doesn't have those types of choices, that he's there to follow and make the rules work that are set up. So my concern is the speed, it still is. That's a twenty-five mile an hour zone right there, and we've got excavator trucks coming through at fifty, sixty miles an hour, and now we're going to add more apartments, lots of people, lots of vehicles, plus just to the west, we have Quail coming out, and I would encourage you to look at a roundabout, look at a four-way stop, look at something that would slow this, this place down. So that is, those are my, my biggest concerns right now. But thanks again for not allowing the development to go right in behind us on the east end of the park. We understand that things have to continue to move on, this isn't my part, but it's our part, and this is my concern. So thanks for your time.
Thanks, Mark.
Don't think of me, right, moving closer to me, you don't think of it.
Anybody else?
Oh, yes, you did. One more thing.
Is that it?
Neil Gilbertson, Neil Gilbertson again from River Falls. What he was talking about there, moving it closer to me is going to block my view. He wants to move closer to me and move her back there so he can see further, a little further. Makes a big difference with me, with me too. I just want you to let, let you remember that. By moving closer to me, it blocks my view, away it is better. Leave it the way, if it, if it don't, if it does go through, leave it the way it is. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else there? Anybody else have anything to say?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Scott.
Sorry, let me turn my video on. So I think most of those commenters were, were wanting their comments to be part of the public hearing record or the agenda item. You know, they'll be in the minutes, but I think it's up to the mayor if he wants to accept that, those comments as part of the public hearing record for the agenda item. So it would be, let's see, let me look, get to the right page.
It would be...
So agenda item number two, there's a public hearing, I think there's at least one person in the audience wants to speak at the public hearing, but I suspect that those three speakers also would like their comments in the record for the public hearing.
Yes.
I just want to verify with those speakers if they're, if they're okay with that, then we can reflect that their comments were part of the public hearing record, so.
And I apologize about that, I completely forgot that we were going to have a public hearing on that. I should have waited, I apologize to those people for that.
That's all right, so I have the record of Mr. Gilbertson, Mr. Spafford, and Ms. Hatch.
And Patricia LaRue.
I'm sorry, that's right, sorry, Patricia. So as we come up to that other item, then you can add additional comments in the public hearing when you open and close the public hearing for that item, and I believe developers have the elbow on the phone also.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't jump in soon.
No, no, I'm glad, yeah, I, I completely spaced it off that we're having a public hearing on that. Okay, anything else, Scott?
No.
Okay. Okay, that's it for public comments, let's move on. First thing I'm going to do is, we're actually, we'll close the public hearing, or we'll close, excuse me, we'll close the council hearing and open up a public hearing on a resolution, on resolution approving a general development plan for De Sanctus Park. Is there anybody else in the audience there that would, has anything else they'd like to say about this?
This is John, a lady is coming up.
Yep. Can't hear her, John.
Can you hear me now?
Yep, there you go.
Okay, thank you. Elizabeth Boden, again, I just wanted my comments to be separate. I thought the issue of my previous statement under public comments was more important to be separated from my comment about this. I am very glad to hear from my fellow community members, though about De Sanctus development, their comments were great, and I won't take up too much time. I've spoken to you before about how precious I think green space is in this community, and my concerns about pushing forward new developments when we have so many other housing concerns. We have apartment complexes that are dilapidated, that are overcrowded. This new housing at De Sanctus represents yet another instance, in my opinion, of green space being sacrificed for a less public purpose. The access of children and families through that park has increased during these last few months at stay-at-home. The addition of the public workout space in there has made that a much more utilized park, so I get it that people wanting to live close to that would be an attribute. However, again, public green space, I think, should be council's priority, and I, again, feel that our housing concerns around rezoning neighborhoods with family-type housing that is being used currently disproportionately for rental homes by students. I just, again, think that this parcel would be better locked in green space, and that we save these precious little open possibilities and better use the space we already have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything to say on this?
Hello, my name is Ben Fox, twenty-five, twenty-nine, twelve eleven. I was looking at some of the three sixties previous designs in Alaska, La Crosse, and I think Marinette. They have basically a gray slate with white trim facade on all of them, and I was wondering if you could get a little more visual textures or something else, a little bit difference, differentiation in the patterns of the buildings, that they're all uniform, very plain. They also have a lot of like porches and decks that are facing Division Street, where those could have some different textures, I mean, there's a lot of fences and concrete, more visual. And then the, currently Quail Ridge has had a lot of emerald ash for preventive ash tree removal, and the plan has shown a prairie-type, you know, boulevard, and I was thinking more with the sidewalk behind it, and then we shade in the afternoon, having more boulevard-type trees as opposed to more prairie. And I know that you guys, I don't know what the public works comments are on the prairie over by Sterling Pond where the soldiers, but it seems like it has a lot of struggles with maintenance of it, because it's completely turned to a lot over, a lot of just thistles and framing, so with that, I think you...
Thanks. Does anybody else have anything?
Mr. Mayor, I think there's a member of the development team that, I'm not sure if they're interested in speaking, that I can, I can speak a little bit too about the, what the general development plan and the process is also.
Are they on the phone, would they like to talk?
John, do we have some on the phone at least? Should be there.
Hello, can you hear us?
Yes.
Very good. Marvin Wanders with Three Sixty Real Estate Solutions, you also have with you Jeremy Novak of Three Sixty Real Estate Solutions, and Will Crad of ISG. Thank you for inviting us to the meeting tonight. We apologize for the current circumstances, they're definitely challenging when it comes to development world and the public hearing process and public meetings, which we, we enjoy as part of this development process. And thank you to the neighbors for their comments on, on the development. When we look at the site and at this development, just a, you know, some of our thoughts that I think I can share with the community, and then what we really want to do is just answer questions that, that you as the council and mayor may have on the site, and Will Crad will have some of the more specific deal, details with the development plan. When we look at this site, and I'll just address some of the community concerns, prairie and food sources are something that's critical and something that we do in all of our new developments. We went to this about five years ago, that our plant sources at our sites are sustainable native plants, and then we also incorporate healthy garden spaces into the sites as well. We thought prairie fit extremely well into this versus just, for example, like a green yard out in, in front of this space. All of our plants that we do around the site will have either a food function or an ecology function, and we do that by design so that whether it's winter time and it's supplying food sources for birds and animals and/or food sources for humans. For example, we may put in raspberry bushes versus dogwoods, for example, so it's an actual food source, it could be a human food source and/or a wildlife food source. This particular site, as we looked at it, and the reason we're using the building that we're using here is we wanted the building to be reflective of more a traditional home style, like a row home, town home style, than a traditional apartment building. And I think that fits better into this neighborhood of more single-family homes. And then as far as porches on it, porches on the back of the building, the green space and outdoor space for the residents become important to us. So if I can just hit a few of the high notes on these buildings, you know, the first floor of this building, we will actually have individual boilers and in-floor heat in all the units, and then above those one-level first floor units, the second and third story are stacked townhomes. Those stacked townhomes have outdoor space that is over on top of the garage. So what we're trying to do, and we have built this building in existing neighborhoods, and in both, in two different communities, so this would be starting the fifth time we've built this building. Every time we do it, we try to use curvy earth tone when it comes to siding and looks, just so it, it passes the test of time. So we do keep our siding more earth tone, sightings more when it comes to the palette of the buildings. As far as developments and just, you know, this is the first time we're meeting some of you here, and as a company, we develop typically infill developments in communities. We will develop between fifteen and twenty million dollars worth of new developments a year, single-family homes, multi-family product is what we traditionally do, but we have a fairly wide portfolio of different infill developments, whether that's grocery stores, condominiums, and the like. So that's kind of a high-level background on who we are, and with that, I guess we just want to take your questions that you may have with our, our thoughts on the development.
Let me, let me close out the public hearing first. So we're closing out the public hearing and reopen the council hearing, and first thing we'll do is I'll take a motion on this.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we approve the resolution for the planned unit development, the general development plan for the De Sanctus Town Homes.
Second. First and second, now, now questions or discussions?
Mr. Mayor, I have four points of concern tonight.
Mr. Mayor, sorry, this...
Hang on a second. Yes, Scott.
Staff, both Amy Peterson and I are available to...
Okay.
Present to, if you have things that you want us to provide any additional background or anything.
Okay, perfect.
We'll hold our comments or presentation, and you can answer questions, ask your questions, and either developer or staff can explain if you have questions about the GDP versus the SIP and the PUD and all the different acronyms that we're using. But this is the, this is a first step and, and several more steps that will be required before the, the project is approved and a formance would be issued.
Okay. Go ahead, Sean, you're, you're up first.
Thanks, Mayor. I have the privilege of being the representative District One, and I have talked with the majority of people back in my district regarding this item extensively. So I just wanted to touch on four main concerns, I'll start with the first one. It says the Plan Commission did not meet on this item, all right? So I have some concerns about the touch-ups, and I believe we can improve on the plan. The plan is good, but since it lacked the Plan Commission oversight, I want to first start out by thanking everyone for being patient, because there's... because there's a lot for us to unpack here in the council. This may have been a good item to wait to get more community feedback. It's been on the books for about three years. It was first brought up now, someone has a plan, and it's not, and it's not going before the Plan Commission to be discussed, that people have not had an opportunity to listen to as much as they should. So I have several concerns, but I'll start with the easier ones. My first concern is what have I learned? And we've discussed this on the Park Board, is that gazebos in our city have been high targets of vandalism. The reason is because they are enclosed spaces, which makes them easy targets to be vandalized. That is why I proposed to, we put a pavilion in instead. Pavilion would meet all the needs of that community and would be more open for everyone to enjoy and would blend nicely with the park, allowing visitors to be social and eat outside throughout and enjoy life. So under Design Elements on page 16, where it reads, "The site will feature outdoor spaces and residence, drills, hammocks, gazebo, community gardens." Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to strike and remove the word gazebo and replace it with the word pavilion.
Mr. Mayor, would that be more appropriate referred to committee?
I couldn't hear you.
Oh, I was, I was thinking that's more a committee decision. Actually, if at some point we could have staff talk to us a little bit to remind us about what the procedure is going forward with this preliminary plan, I would appreciate the background.
That would be helpful, yes. Because we will have another meeting on the specific implementation plan. And I think some of the concerns that have been spoken to already can be addressed at that time.
Okay.
Now that we've had a chance to hear them.
I just want to raise, I guess, a point of order here. Mr. Downing has a motion on the table, and we've kind of had some discussion. We should probably either act or.
Just a second.
What's that?
Nobody seconded it.
Mr. Mayor, can you call for a first and a second? A second?
He, yes. He made the motion and nobody seconded it. But I think, I think Sean's concern is something we can talk about when, like Hal says, when we do get to the specific implementation plan, we can get more down into that stuff, too.
So, Mr. Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, but is this actually the, isn't this our, our general implementation plan as far as the foundation of it right now?
Mr. Simpson, can you speak to this?
Yeah.
Yeah, so sorry. Don't we love these virtual meetings? I can't nudge people virtually, so let's, let's talk a little bit about that. Amy Peterson is available also, and she'll, she can elaborate. So a little background from my end, and Ms. Larue indicated this piece of property has not been part of the park. So that'd be the first clarification for, for those. The property was marketed for development over time. Ultimately, the city had an opportunity working with the DeSantis family to purchase it with the idea that it would be developed. As Mr. Spafford indicated, there was some then discussion about swapping this theme park space for this seven acres, including this seven acres into the park, and then developing a number of single-family lots along the order of what was originally planned in the Cerna House development. Ultimately, the council indicated they didn't want to go forward with that and then determined that staff should go out for a request for proposals on development after we had a developer propose a townhome development and then determined that they didn't think it was, they had some, it looked like twin home, townhome, I think about 40 units there. That developer chose to do some other projects in the community and other communities. And so then the council asked staff to do a request proposal on this seven acres for development. That was after the time we had completed our housing study, which indicated a need for a variety of types of housing. And, and so we've seen another, a number of developers putting forward proposals to develop the property. We selected, there was a staff and a member of the Plan Commission and others that kind of selected 360 to work with through this process with the understanding that they needed to go through the full development process and get approval from the project. So this is kind of one of the first steps. First step, I guess, was to submit their, their proposal. And then this next step is the general development plan. And then they've got a number of other steps with, which Amy can elaborate on. But the park, there is a park plan for DeSantis Park. It is a regional park. It's intended to be one of three regional parks for the community. And so it's, it's intended to serve a large, you know, basically the entire community plus even neighboring communities, much like Hoffman and Glenn, only with some different, differing dynamics as far as passive play and trails and other things. So Roosevelt Street in the original Cerna House subdivision came through and over somewhat to Dry Run in that area. And so the RFP was asking developers to provide some higher density than single-family housing to help us resolve the access to more people to the regional park, namely with parking and a connection to the Glover Schoolhouse, resolve the Dry Run, Bob White intersection issue, and make a connection to the existing, you know, pedestrian network coming off of division. So you can see a number of those strategies have been submitted. And then I'll let Amy talk a little bit about what the difference is and where we're at in the process and where she believes that different comments are most appropriate. I would say, just as a general advice to the council and the community, that specific comments are appropriate basically throughout the process. So there's nothing, there's nothing wrong with providing specific comments about things all throughout the process. The council's not being asked to approve a resolution for a specific implementation plan. And Amy will talk about that. You're just being asked to do the, the general overall development plan and where professionally Amy and her staff feel those things kind of enter into the general development versus specific implementation, she can talk a little bit more about that. And that may include some of these things that are brought up tonight, like building positioning, certainly number of buildings or road accesses and things like that are all, all things typically covered for sure in the, in the general development plan. Some of the other things are typically included in a specific implementation plan, which is more or less a contract between the developer and the community about what they expect to develop. So Amy, do you want to elaborate, maybe clean up some of the things I said in the process? John might have to unmute you, or you have to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, yes, thank you. I can talk a little bit about the PUD process and where we are. So it, it tends to be a delicate balance between the GDP and the SIP, right? So staff needs to have enough detailed information in the GDP to ensure that we feel the project is feasible and going to function at the location. But really, what we're asking for is a conceptual review and approval at this time. Is this the type of project that we're looking for at this location? And then once we get through the GDP process, then it will go to SIP. And that's where all the details fully come through. Then it's full construction plans. And, and like I said, the details really come out in, in that phase of the process. So right now, again, it's conceptual. And again, this typically goes to Plan Commission and then comes to council. And of course, during this process, council's going to get both the GDP and the SIP potentially without Plan Commission meeting, so.
Can you speak to whether the Plan Commission has received these, this information? And, and you've asked for their review, even though they haven't had a meeting?
Yes, we did send this out to Plan Commission. They did review, and we have received comments back on, on the proposal. And those were provided in the report as well, so.
Thank you.
Amy, can you speak to the number of public hearings? I mean, we haven't changed, I want to be clear about the Plan Commission being the, the council being the Plan Commission and the fact that, which, some of these steps, there'd be a public hearing at the Plan Commission. It will now be at the council. I just want to make sure I'm clear on that, and the council is too, that because the Plan Commission is not meeting doesn't mean there's less official, public hearings that I'm aware of.
That's correct.
It just happened at the council level. So, and certainly then it take, it does take away the ability for the public to make the comments at the Plan Commission, where they would normally be making those in a public hearing, and then it would just come to the council. That's some clarity on how that works.
So, so Amy, right now, what you're really looking for is just us to say, yep, we think this is kind of the project we're looking for here. We think this will work. And then after that, we can get deeper into it?
Right, so is 84 units of one-to-two and three-bedroom housing, yeah, does the concept look good? Is that what the city is looking for at this location?
Okay. Yep, Chris?
I do want to speak to our housing study again. I've done this on multiple projects that have come before the city. You know, we had some developments out in Sterling Ponds that have been in the works, and they had to go in a 30-day wait period, which have been long sought out. There's been a lot of conversation with staff and these developers as far as how these projects will go. You know, and, and people do have that public record to come before council and make these statements. And I appreciate that. I also want to remind folks that they're coming to us because the Plan Commission isn't meeting. And we can't, if a project is going to move forward in the long run, why would we make your business wait to go into construction and prolong that throughout the winter, essentially causing more cost to taxpayers, more cost to the developers, and essentially causing potentially more cost to the people that are going to be renting these facilities? I really, we have a housing study that speaks exactly to that type of housing that we need in River Falls. And this yet meets one of those checkmarks of the types of housing that we need. I'm going to be voting in favor of the overall general development. Obviously, there are some concerns that need to be addressed and taken a look at. And I think we could do that before we get to that specific and bring it back to council.
Mr. Mayor, may I get back to, so I'm going to talk about the concerns I have, if that's okay?
Yep.
All right, so I'm going to talk about the amendments I would like to see in there, but I'm not going to put them in the form of a motion. I'll just say this is the one I would make. Is that all right?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, so my second concern, or another concern to the community I have regarding the speed limit of this area and how it is reflected in the plan we have. The speed on Division Street is 25 miles per hour. Most drivers do anywhere between 25 and 40 miles per hour. I believe there's an opportunity to potentially do a roundabout there. There will be higher traffic in that area. And like I said, it already is at a point where we can look at how to improve that area in this plan. The traffic flow coming in and out of that regional park with the new apartments, including the surrounding area, will be best served with a roundabout in the future. When in the future, I think, is the real question. So I'm going to, you know, I want people to consider an amendment in the future that will allow the city to examine and figure out practicality and plan to implement a roundabout if need be.
One, one thing, Sean. Hey, Amy, would the engineer department do a traffic study along here for this?
I believe City Engineer Crystal Rowley has looked at this and has determined that at the Dry Run and Division Street, there's not a traffic concern at this time. I guess, I, you know, to, to speak to the speed and the need of a roundabout, I would, I would want staff to take a broader look at the area because there's future development that's potentially coming, right, west of DeSantis. So whether, you know, something like that in the future is needed at Dry Run or whether it's further west, staff would need to take a look at that.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. And thank you. My, my third concern is there's a major, major safety concern that the community has regarding a possible road extension. The DeSantis family gave the land to be developed as a park. And then the city funded DeSantis Park with a DNR stewardship grant as well. The land intended use was to give the land to the city to be quite passive city, park with a long list of requirements that came with the donation. So I'm not, I'm not in favor of the possible road extension to Roosevelt Street. We have concerns of kids coming and going. It poses a significant concern as well as the loss of park space. Having a regional park pushes its traffic through a smaller residential neighborhood with lots of kids does not seem advisable. This already is a concern for neighbors in the neighborhood because the kids roam freely around. I don't think it's advisable to make the same bigger problem than it is by opening up a road extension in the backside of a highly trafficked neighborhood. Another major reason possible road extension is not advisable is it takes away the valuable green space in the park, which was the intended use of why it was given to the city. We should value the park space for future recreational use and why it was given to the city. This was discussed before, and the city respected that area, and I feel we need to honor that commitment. Before backing, back on us a potential, a potential road is telling the community that we did not listen to their concerns, that we not value the green space that was given to the city for the intended park use. So there, there's three other developments in the city that also have only one exit. And I know about, there's probably more, too. There are Groton House, Gulfview, and Glen Meadow, and they operate just fine the way they are. We have plenty of developments going on in the seven-acre lot with the rest of this plan, which is good, as other council members have pointed out. In the phasing plan number eight, in the packet, it talks about green space. In the city's comprehensive plan, we know that you have to have so much green space to qualify to be a regional park in the future, which makes this park, which makes this part of the plan very pivotal. So we should look at honoring the use of what it was intended for. If the plan, which it calls for, is to be a regional park, in parentheses, we can't be putting more potentially city streets through it or take away green space intended for park use only. And if we, you know, if we do that, we don't need the road extension. That means we save money there as well, because we know that pavement is very expensive. So looking under the word goals on the plan, page 15, page 15 of the plan, I think we need to consider an amendment to remove the possible connection of Roosevelt Street to Dry Run through the park to eliminate permanent dead-end street issues on Cerna House first addition to the east in the future. And, Mr. Mayor, my fourth concern, and my last concern here on this particular, is the positioning of the buildings on the seventh acre lot. As you've heard from some of our community members, we don't want to wait for the final plan to talk about changing things. So it would be nice if we could address this sooner and relieve some of their concerns and make it work for everyone. We want the new seven-acre lot to work for the best established neighbors who have been, who have lived there by staggering the placement of the buildings just enough to make it work for everyone, which is what, which we can easily accommodate with simple, a simple amendment in the future and talking with those neighbors before dropping more buildings on. This allows the three neighbors on Division Street to enjoy a personal view, well as other, of their surroundings, as well as allowing the new buildings to also share and have a good view of the park and the surrounding area because it won't change their view at all. So in the future, I want to consider that we adopt specifics of what I outlined regarding the seven-acre lot and the concept plan here. And I thank you for your time.
Thanks, Sean. It just fails, yep, go ahead.
I've got a quick, quick question or clarification. There was some concern brought up in the public comments that, that we are eliminating park space here.
No.
This, this site has been, this site has been a zoned R1 from the beginning, I believe. So I'd asked staff to, to either clarify or correct me on that one. But we are not eliminating park space here. This is not a subtraction of our park. This is not a subtraction of our park space. I think that, I think the number of parks we have in the city and our commitment to this, to the parks and green space in the city are, speak for themselves. So I just want to make sure we clarify that. So Scott or Amy, could you please? Correct me or clarify that this has been zoned as housing of some kind since the beginning, since the inception of the park?
I'm, I can't speak to the forever zoning, but the development was not. This part was not part of the park zoned area, the conservancy zoned area. And you know if it was, was. Ag or Argwan or what it's been zoned over time.
My point is essentially that this was always intended for another use other than park.
Yeah, well, and you can see that extension through the houses that were built. See, I get my directions. The houses built to the east of the seven acres. I mean, at one point, there was a plan to continue single family houses down all the way to Dry Run. And so there is some topography there. So I think there is, I do hear a question that the council probably wants to discuss a little bit is the, with the developer. Is. I'm not sure it's as easy as moving or, or.
No.
Switching the dagger of the buildings because of the topography of. Where Division Street is, the elevation of Division, Division Street and the elevation of the parkland. So maybe the developer wants to. Speak to that. I don't know if Marvin or Jeremy or ISG represented wants to speak to that, but it's not, that sounds like an issue of. Concerned at least a couple of you. And so that one is something you probably would want to resolve at the GDP level. And if you're really expecting the SIP to come back and have the building moved, you know, twenty feet. Or some. Pretty significant difference in configurations of the building versus parking versus green space. That's something that is. I would advise you to think about trying to clarify that now if that's, if that's a concern of a majority of you or not.
Yeah, this is Will Crap with ISG and I'm happy to speak to that. So both during the proposal process and since. Having field surveyed the site and working in the development of this general development plan. We've looked at a number of different concepts frankly, on how to best use the, the property. As it relates to its topography, as you noted, there's actually pretty significant topography there. The. The property slopes. About a four to one in some places to, to the north. So that means that that equates to a drop of as much as twelve to twenty feet across the property. The reason we landed on the concept of the easternmost building or the building that's closest to the city. Where it is, is it's set back, I guess, at least from a horizontal distance further away from the private residence. And as I mentioned with the slope. It also makes its elevation approximately six to seven feet lower than it would have to be. If it were shifted even as much as twenty feet to the south, if we were to reverse the staggering from what it is right now. Kind of secondary to that, the state, the staggering as shown pushes the westernmost building. So the building that would be closest to Dry Run Road, closer to the main intersection of Dry Run and West Division Street. Which is generally considered good urban design. You know, there was the comment before about the view to the park. So as you're driving into the city, it does open up the view to the park sooner. As you're entering on Dry Run Road or coming into the city from the west. And lastly, again, the proposed staggering fits the topography better. Therefore reducing the amount of excavation that needs to take place. Which has many different effects, including environmental cost and aesthetic.
When this first came or, you know, a while ago, he and Hal were part of. Part of the, working with the planning department, looking at this development. And we thought the way it was laid out made the most sense for the land around it and the way everything was sitting. So we were okay with it.
Mr. Mayor.
Hell, you can talk to that too.
Yeah, well. My comment on that specifically is, 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 I, I think I agree with what the, what the gentleman from three sixty just said about. You know, while we are putting buildings in. As far as, you know, the entryway view goes, we are, by putting them closer to the city, we're, you know, opening. Or at least maintaining a little more of an open view as you come in, as, as people come into the city. In terms of the locations of the buildings, you know, and the comments that we've heard so far, we have some people who want them on the east side and some people that want them on the west side. So. You know, I, I think. I'm fine with the location of the buildings the way they are right now. I am very glad that everybody has come, and I really appreciate people showing up and. Commenting on this in specifics and, and Mr. Downing as well. Because getting this kind of feedback this early in the process is, is really important. Rather than waiting for the specific implementation plan. And then. Not having a lot of time for staff to react to those comments and turn it back around. So I, I'm, I'm, I'm glad we got, we have as much information as we have in this packet. And I appreciate. All the comments I've been furiously writing down notes that, from, you know, everyone that's spoken since the beginning of this meeting. And I will be following up with Amy and city staff and any council members who want to speak with me. As a representative to the plan commission. Thanks, Hal.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
To speak to the Roosevelt issue too. I would say that. This, this development plan is allowing Roosevelt to go through or not go through. It is officially mapped right now as a Roosevelt going through. And so there could be a different action or a separate action by the council too, if they wanted to make that more permanent change, if they didn't want Roosevelt to go through. This development plan as laid out would necessarily require Roosevelt to go through, but tries to provide the ability to do that. Amy, did you have anything to clarify in that?
Yeah, so the way that we're, we're planning for this right now is that. It's not going to go through as a public access. It's not going to be a public road. It will be an emergency access to that neighborhood, to the north and east. Because they have been lacking that secondary access for many years. So it will be emergency access only.
Can I ask Amy a question, Mr. Mayor? Ask Amy a quick, a quick question, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
So when you say emergency use only, does that mean that road is going to be not, it's going to be more like a smaller, just. How do I put this? More of a pathway slash road, not necessarily, so it won't really be affecting foot traffic is what you're saying, right?
Correct, in fact, we're, we're working on the plan as to whether that's going to stay as is for a few years and then be upgraded in the future. But those more details are to come. So I don't see it changing a whole lot from what it is. If it is expanded in the, in the future. It may be expanded to be able to take one of the larger fire trucks. But again, it's going to be emergency access only.
Thank you, and that makes a lot of sense to me as well.
Thanks, Amy.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Amy, I got a question for you. In, in planning this. Where would Roosevelt connect to Dry Run? Would it be up on the north side of the. Round them out? Would it be essentially taking a house out of there? How would that run? Would it come down through the top of the park or through the park?
Well, so kind of like I talked about, it's really just going to keep the same. Location as the current path that's there.
You would just upgrade it to more of a street level road?
Potentially something that could carry a larger fire truck, yes.
So would that be something very similar to what Sterling Ponds has today? Where like if you're out in the corporate area, there would be no through traffic allowed going the one way. In this case, it would be no through traffic going either way upon, except for emergencies? Is that kind of, you're kind of like a single lane?
Correct.
Awesome. Yeah, that, that makes a little bit more sense. You know, I'd love to see that language in that proposal if we're approving that today. If somebody wanted to make an amendment with some kind of language in there, I would be a strong second.
I think that's what you're already looking at, isn't it, Amy? It's already in there, isn't it?
That's the concept that we're, we're working on currently, yes.
Okay.
There, there isn't specific language, Mr. Mayor, as far.
No.
Being in the emergency, it's just that the road is going to be connected. So there's no clarification in there, whether it's a road or emergency access, right? And I think that's a strong clarification to be made, especially for the folks that live in that neighborhood. I think it sends a precedent and gives staff direction long term. To say there is going to be no regular traffic through here. It's for emergency vehicles or emergency out for the residents only.
Yeah, I can make a motion for that, if that's all right, Mr. Mayor.
Hang on a second. So Amy, is there, is something like this possible? In language like this?
You know, honestly, I mean, you guys can make the motion or we can take it as comments like we have throughout the rest of the meeting and, and. And ensure that that happens is through the SIP.
Yeah, so if you wanted to modify the resolution, Mayor, amend the resolution, that would be in order if that's the council chose to do. The resolution right now, the only therefore be resolved is that the city council. Approves the general development plan. And so essentially as it was submitted. And again, it'll come back as the SIP. But if you're going to amend, the amendment that would be in order, I guess, would be. Something to the effect of what the clarification that the council is, is not in favor of through street. From Roosevelt in connection with the development.
Okay. Okay, so if somebody wants to make that?
If, if, if that were to go through, I would like, you know, just clarify that it's going to be an emergency. Lane for traffic only and foot traffic, of course. But really just adding that, you know, specification that it's an emergency road only.
Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make an amendment to the resolution approving the plan unit development, general development plan for De Sanctus Town Homes. To add. Let me see if I can get this right here. Therefore be resolved, let's see, that the city council hereby approve the general development plan for the De Sanctus Town Homes. On the condition that any extension from Roosevelt Street through the park is for emergency use only. Is primarily for emergency use, how about that?
I will second.
Second that. Okay, so we got a first and a second on that. Is there any discussion on the amendment?
Hal, if you, if I had that second, I would just add in there from that Roosevelt through the park to Dry Run Road. Right, just that specification, do you agree with that?
I'll take that as a front line amendment, yes.
Okay, I second that.
So we, like I said, we have a second on the amendment, is there any other discussion?
Does, does it need any more clarification? As regarding. Foot traffic or is it fine the way it is?
I think it's good as is because it's, it's a path already. We're not going to write people up for walking on it, right?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Amy.
If I could just make the clarification that the emergency access comes from the east end of the development and goes to Roosevelt. If we say all the way to Dry Run, emergency access, that is the development's access.
That's their access, right.
So don't put the part about going all the way to Dry Run.
Correct.
Just from, just from Roosevelt to the development?
Sure.
Hal, you okay with that?
Yes, that's, that's contrary to Mr. Gagne's. Amendment to my amendment, I guess.
Chris, you okay with that?
Give me two seconds.
I'm trying to look at the, at the picture here while. Coming up with the language at the same time, so I know exactly what you're talking about.
Give me one second here. So. In the possible connection of Roosevelt Street to Dry Run Road through the park to eliminate. So it says Roosevelt to Dry Run Road in the plan that's written there, the memorandum. So I just want to mimic any kind of language that's out there. And that's where that came from.
Mr. Mayor, can the applicant make a clarification?
Yes.
This is Will Crap with ISG. I don't know if we're capable of putting any of the application materials up on the screen, but I just wanted to pull your attention to. Sheet C three dash thirty in the plan, which shows a me, emergency vehicle turning movements. That illustrates well here that. We are showing emergency access partially through the development. And then a, what is called out on the plan as a fire lane that actually connects to the walking path. And it's actually the path itself that we're proposing would serve as an emergency fire lane up to Roosevelt Street. The, the proposal as it's before you today, it does not. Proposed to add. Any pavement to the path.
Amy's got.
I think we need some clarification from Amy.
So down on the east side.
So can everybody see my mouse?
Yep, yep.
So the emergency access would come through here. And through the parking lots. And through here.
And what about the area, the connection to. Roosevelt Street on the northeast end or that, yeah, right up there where your mouse is.
Again, it would come right here.
Down and then across.
Yep, right like this.
Okay. Well, that helps. And then connect to the existing kind of parking area there or what?
It would come right through the development's parking area and drive.
Oh, I see.
Okay.
That connection way over to the east.
Correct, right here.
If that's used for emergency access, I certainly don't have a problem with that.
Nope.
Not at all.
So. Now that we're even more confused. We with the amendment.
So, Mr. Gagne, would you be willing to pull your, 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 your amendment to my amendment?
So if you can look at page fifteen for me real quick.
Sure.
The third bullet from the, or actually the bottom bullet there, it says possible connection of Roosevelt Street to Dry Run Road. Through the park to eliminate permanent dead end street issues in Cerner House first addition. So that's what I was speaking specifically to. Yes, it's not in the whereas, but it's in the plan and it's giving staff direction that we're approving this for emergency only. You're still getting to, from Roosevelt to Dry Run in the end. So.
Right.
I think the way we worded it is perfect because you're still going from point A to point B. You're just, it doesn't matter how you get there. If we connect the dots, it's only for emergency access only. And that's my understanding of my amendment.
Okay.
Of your amendment and.
Right, right, no, okay, I think, I think that makes sense still if the rest of the council agrees. We are, we are limiting that to emergency access. And now that we understand the route, which wasn't clear to us before, it's not going directly through the heart of the park and across the north end, it's coming down. And now that we understand the route, which wasn't clear to us before, uh, it's not going directly through the heart of the park and across the north end, it's coming down. To that connector on the, on this, on the east side. So um.
Are you okay with that, Hal?
I'm fine. Yep, let's go.
The two. First and second.
Okay, you want to, you want to read that amendment again now?
Yeah, let me do that.
So we all understand exactly what you're saying.
All right, let's do this. Don't you love doing this stuff on the fly? Let me just pull this up. Okay. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of River Falls hereby approves the general development plan for the De Sanctus. Town Homes. With the condition that. Any extension of Roosevelt Avenue. To. Dry Run Road. Is for emergency purpose only.
And I second that.
We have a first and a second on the amendment. Is there any discussion on that?
I just want both the other council members for the amendment, and I think the public appreciates uh, the work that we've all done here. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything to amend? Okay, Christie, so we have an amendment. Please take a roll call on the amendment to uh. I'm not going to say it again because I can't say it all, Hal.
It's okay, it's video, somebody will get it.
That was an I.
Okay, Odine.
Yes.
Aye.
Gagne.
Yes.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Pearson.
Yes.
Thank you.
We have, and we have a first and a second on the original motion for the original resolution. Are we, is there any other discussion on that?
Mr. Mayor, I have one other question if I could.
Go ahead, then Ben, you can be next.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ben, I didn't mean to. I noticed on the plan, and I just happened to notice it now. We aren't dealing with stormwater in this plan. Is that going to come later? And I also would like to hear from the developer what his plans might be for that. What I would call a remnant parcel on the very west on the other side of Dry Run Road. Uh, Bob White intersection. Um, but it doesn't appear like.
Realign it.
Stormwater uh, talked about right now and then that, that other little remnant piece, if we could hear about that real quick.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, go ahead, Amy.
Yeah, so we are working on stormwater in the plans and that will come forth with the S I P.
Thank you.
And regarding the parcel on the west side of the range Dry Run Road, that is not being sold to the developer at this time. And it would not be part of this project.
Very good, thank you.
Ben.
Mr. Mayor, uh, question regarding our connection of. This development and those neighborhoods over there to go back to our much discussed sidewalk issue. Uh, with sidewalk or biking trail to our downtown business district. And I don't see, as I'm looking at the satellite picture here. Uh, continuous access on any of our main roads there. To those areas. Could someone show me where that would be or, or do we simply not have something there? Am I missing something?
Mr. Mayor. So I don't believe that this will result in a continuous path or sidewalk. Downtown in any straight way. Um, there's a piece of. Sidewalk that would be missing on West Maple between approximately Apollo and Winter. If you were trying to take the traffic or bikes back or people back through West Maple. And then of course Division Street does not have a continuous sidewalk on either side all the way to Main Street. So. And then there also be um, some sidewalk infill that would be, needed to be discussed about whether the council wants to do that or not for. Properties uh, going. Where the path is going to come up um, to Division or the sidewalk, I should say. There's probably four or five properties there that would need um, some sidewalk on the. North side of Division or to connect that, but that would only connect back to. Certain point on the north side of Division where the sidewalk ends. I'm thinking it's maybe Winter. And then there's no sidewalk on either side probably until um. Get down to like, maybe Lewis or Clark or. So I, I can't tell you that there's a continuous piece of sidewalk here that would get you all the way back, um, potentially if the sidewalk goes in as proposed. Um, and you did some infill on Division, it would get you back to Winter. Um, and then certainly Winter would take, you could take sidewalk or path out um, all the way to Powell and then. And there's a question of that too. So we've got some connections to make for sure.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, uh, question for Scott Simpson.
Yep.
Mr. Simpson, could you define the process of where this plan goes so people watching who had questions and concerns can voice um, what they feel is important to them uh, coming up?
I can generally do that, but I think Amy can specifically do it better. So Amy, do you have the dates that we are thinking about for future meetings for the. Um, plan and, and then I'll mention that. If the project, which it's likely that there, that's part of the. Project is a Texas Criminal Financing District, that has a process. The S I P has a process, uh, which is the P U D process. In addition, the city is the owner of the property, so there's a development agreement to be done between the city and the. Developers. So there's three general processes that will be proceeding under. If any of those three do not receive approval from the council, then the project is not likely to go through. At least as it's envisioned currently. Um, Amy, do you know what? We're thinking either month, maybe a month estimate for when we're doing um, the next action?
Thank you for that long lead-in, Scott. I'm still uh, digging through my email, looking for the timeline. Um, so I'm not sure if maybe Jeremy has that at his fingertips. Um, he may.
So although we'd like to give it to you right now at the meeting, I think the other thing, Sean, that we're happy to do is to get that out on the, the website. Keeping in mind also that we're posting all the development projects and, and um, plans and specs and things out on our uh, website for people to monitor.
So I did just get that date. It's uh, August twenty-fifth for the S I P, the developers agreement. And the TIF process, so.
Thank you both.
So Christie, we have a first and a second on the resolution approving a general development agreement planned for De Sanctus Park.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Sean.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Gagne.
Yes.
Watson.
Aye.
Pearson.
Yes.
Plunkett.
Aye.
Okay, so next we'll uh, close the council hearing again and open up the public, another public hearing on the resolution. Renaming uh, Edinburgh Drive to Kingston Street and Sterling Ponds Edition. Is there anybody in the audience has anything like to say about this? Okay, as there's nobody in the audience that has anything to say about this, we will. Close the public hearing and reopen up the council hearing and I will accept a motion on this.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval for the resolution revising street name in Sterling Ponds, changing Edinburgh Drive to Kingston Street.
Second.
Okay, we got a first and a second. Any questions or comments from anyone?
Clarify staff, we're only, the only address that's getting impacted here is the park, is that correct?
I, I believe that's what it said.
That's what the memo says.
Yep.
I'm making a whole bunch of people change their address.
No. Anybody else have anything? Christie, we have a first and a second, a loo, second on the resolution renaming Edinburgh Drive to Kingston Street and Sterling Ponds.
Gagne.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Chris?
Yes.
Thank you. Plunkett.
I heard a yes, Christie.
Thank you. Pearson.
Yes.
Morissette.
Yes.
I heard a yes.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Odine. Watson.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, next we'll move on to uh, ordinance. Twenty twenty dash zero six. Amending the official traffic control map of the city River Falls. This would change the speed limits. On South Main from Cemetery Road north to the U W R F Falcon Center entrance. This would change it from thirty-five to twenty-five miles an hour. And this is the first reading and the second reading will be on June twenty-third. Does the council have any questions on this?
Mr. Mayor, um, I know this is just a first reading. Um, but based on traffic flows through there and how some of the traffic can come barreling through there. Um, I think this is definitely a great move, even though we're doing it uh, based on other context. I, I think it's a, a great safety measure as well, especially with the misalignment of East Johnson. Um, West Johnson, the grocery store or the um, gas stations there, uh, but then also this new development.
Any else have anything?
I have a question.
Yep.
Is it too late to consider the setback of the project as to reduce the sound of traffic by being further back from the road?
This is, this is just about the speed limit right now.
Oh, so, okay. Because this, because that's part of why um, the speed limit's being reduced is the sound. That's why my, that's why I'm asking that.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep, go ahead.
Um, in the packet, it was talking about that uh, the grant money. Um, came forward and some of the sound, some of the extra traffic that comes through there. Um, there's specific criteria um, regarding West Cap and that grant money that has this in mind and that's why this is before us today.
Yeah, for the speed limit. Sean, I think that's, that's, go ahead.
So, so I guess my question for um, I don't know if it's city plan or Scott Simpson in the senses. Was the setback already, was that part of the grant and the consideration? I'm guessing it was.
I don't know if it was part of the grant, but it's part of the approval the council provided on January twenty-eighth. So it doesn't mean you couldn't find a way to, certainly you don't have to prove this speed limit if, if you don't agree, but um. Staff suggesting the only practical. Practical option here for the council is either to approve the. Speed limit or not, and we would suggest that not approving the speed limit could jeopardize the project funding. Which is some, which is something we told you, this, I, I do want to clarify too, this isn't new, I, it shouldn't be new to the council hopefully. This was something that was talked about at the specific implementation plan. We're just now getting around to doing the actual. Them a change.
Anybody else have anything? Any questions?
Uh, would we have a step down then from forty-five to twenty-five coming into town or would there be a. A phased in, at some point in the future, a phased in thirty-five going out to somewhere further out of town?
Council member, okay, we're in uh, regular communications with the state of Wisconsin about our concern about the speed limit on. Highway going out of town. Um, we've not been completely successful in convincing them of our concerns, but. Um, there is the plan to redo that as part of their cemetery and the highway resurfacing there. I believe that there um. Is a step down, but I think it's only five miles an hour less. So I don't know if it's from forty-five to forty or, um, but we, we are aware of that and. I've been working with them to try to see how we can. Modify, but that's the speed limit south of cemetery is the state's jurisdiction.
Okay, and there, anybody else have anything? Okay, move on to, next one is the resolution approving the final plat for Sterling Ponds Second Edition. I'll take a motion on that.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we approve the Sterling Pond Second Edition Final Plat.
Second.
Okay, we have first and a second. Uh, questions or comments from anyone?
Mr. Mayor, uh, just a point of order, did we vote on the uh.
It's first reading.
Oh, thank you. Okay, never mind.
So back to the resolution approving the final plat for Sterling Ponds Second Edition. Uh, any other questions or comments on that? From anyone? Otherwise Christie, I have a first and a second on that.
Morissette. Watson. I believe that was a yes.
Correct.
Thank you. Plunkett. Gagne.
Yes.
Odine.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks Christie. Uh, next one is the resolution approving the final plat for Sterling Ponds uh, cottages. And I'll, and, a motion for that.
Mr. Mayor, move approval of the resolution approving Sterling Ponds cottages and final plat.
Second.
Watson.
First and second that, uh, questions or concerns from council members? Okay, Christie, we have a first and a second on the resolution approving the final plat for the Sterling Ponds. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, for the Sterling Ponds cottages.
Mr. Watson.
Yes.
Good. Pearson.
Yes.
Morissette.
Yes.
Gagne.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Odine.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and next is resolution amending the Sterling Ponds Developers Agreement.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Dan.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I uh, move that we approve the addendum to the Sterling Pond Developers Agreement.
Second.
Okay, we have first and second. Any questions or comments from the council? We have a second on the resolution amending the Sterling Ponds Developers Agreement.
Sorry, uh, discussion, Mr. Mayor, I, I missed.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, did you have anything, Mr. Plunkett?
This goes back to that sidewalk issue and I'm sure this was extensively discussed. Uh, before I was here. As we talk about. Non-permeable surfaces and the fact that that has on water infiltration. We're adding a lot of con. By doing this on both sides. And in my experience. The sidewalk. That are privately maintained only end up being. Viable for transportation. A limited period of our, of our year here with our climate and. The need for that. I appreciate having the uh, extension in between units eight. I appreciate having the extension in between units eight and nine there, but I question the adding in the extra non-permeable surface in the development, and this may not be the appropriate time to discuss that, I apologize, that could be a decision that has already been made.
Mr. Mayor, I can speak to that.
Yeah, go ahead, Hal.
Thank you, Mr. Plunkett. We, we, we did have, as, as you noted, a, a discussion about this in the plan commission for, for quite a while. And in the end, the plan commission decided that and we have, I should back up a little bit, we do have in our general code within the city, a requirement that in, in most neighborhood, or in any new neighborhood, the, 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 the plans are to reflect sidewalks on both sides of the streets. And that is to basically bring the community together through walking along the sidewalks. It builds community, having people be able to walk on sidewalks in front of their houses to meet their neighbors and to become essentially a better walk, walk, more walkable community. So, that's the intent overall. In these planned unit developments, there's more flexibility, some of these times, these, these issues are these, kind of the way we would normally do things gets waived, and, and we've, we do more and more of these PUDs all the time. So, sometimes you will see a developer kind of not put that in, and in this case, we asked them to put it back in. And the reason is, we anticipate that there will be a, a fair number of young families living on this cul-de-sac, that children will be essentially wanting to go visit their friends across the street, you know, on their tricycles and, and scooters and other things like that, and that this sidewalk provides a way for them to do that and stay off the street and stay safe. In addition to the connection there between units eight and nine, which is something else that we talked about, so that's why I was in favor of it, and I, I appreciate your concern about impermeable, impermeable surface. That's, it's a balancing act, I, I, I agree.
Additional information, Mr. Watson.
Mr. Mayor, we may be ready to vote, if you're ready.
This is John.
Mayor, you're muted.
I myself muted. Go ahead, Christie, we have a first and a second on the Sterling Pond's amendment to the developers agreement.
Mr. Biersted?
Yes.
Downing?
Yes.
Plunkett?
Yes.
Odine?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Gagne?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Morissette?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. The next is a resolution awarding the sale of $6,250,000 in general obligation corporate purpose bonds series 2028. Now Sean Lens from Ellers is going to give us a presentation, but let's, I'll take it, let's take a motion first, and then he can give the presentation, and hopefully he'll have answered most, if you have any questions. So, I'll take a motion on this first.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the resolution awarding the sale of $6,250,000 in general obligation corporate purpose bonds.
Second.
Okay, Sean, are you online?
This is John, I'm trying to bring him in as a panelist here, just one more time.
So I'll have Sean give his presentation, and then if we have, if we have any questions for him. Diane, I think it's your turn to sing.
I, I have our gentleman here, and I click make a panelist and unmute, and it's not working. I guess if we could have him try. And I'm sure.
That was me, Mayor, so not Sean, but.
He's going to try again, just give him a second here to reconnect and
I told Sarah he has 1.58 minutes.
That's all the more he needs.
Agreed. Oh, Scott, you want to, should we move on to the administrator's report, then come back, or move on to the resolution ratifying the chief of police proclamation, then come back?
I would suggest you do not go on to the police chief one, because I don't think you want to get two actions on the floor at the same time, but certainly if people have yeah, the mayor, you could also you're also able to take a five-minute recess. I would recommend if we do that, that nobody leave the meeting, do not hit the red X button. But if you, if the council was inclined, certainly you, the mayor could call that, and then you could just, I would just mute your video and your mic, but don't, don't hit the red X button.
Lens is in.
Okay, Sean, here. Okay, go ahead, Sean.
Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Thanks, sorry about that little wifi problem on my end. I believe the council all has the sale day report for the bonds that were sold this morning. And I'd like to take you through that report. Bear with me one second, I'm just, there we go, I got it opened up. Where, where I'd like to start is on the bond rating process. Sarah, Scott and I, and a, and a number of other members of city staff sat in on an hour-plus conversation with Moody's Investor Service regarding the bond rating for the city. For a number of years now, River Falls has been a AA2 rated issuer. And I'm happy to say, even with the additional impacts of the coronavirus, the city has maintained that AA2 rating. I would encourage the council to read through the report. I think what you'll conclude in doing so is that many of the areas where the city council and staff have direct influence over rating factors, you are doing very, very good work, and as a result, you're at a AA2 level, and you're a community that for AA2, River Falls is, is on the smaller end, one of the factors being tax base, so many of the factors that you have that control over, you're doing very well. They do also list things that could lead to an upgrade, and there's only two steps higher that you could go, AA1 and AAA. And again, they fall into expanding the tax base. Also, some things maybe have a little bit more over, more control over is reserve levels, and the possibility that you could grow those, though I will say, in my experience, your current fund balance levels are, are strong, so it's not, it's certainly not a weakness of the city. And they also mentioned that if you had even less debt outstanding, that that also may be a factor that could lead to an upgrade. On the downgrade side, if you drop your fund balance significantly, you start spending that money on projects and, and your liquidity goes down, that could drop the rating. Or if you have a significant increase in your debt burden, that also could be a downgrade. But I'd say, in the discussions with them, from my standpoint, the city comes across as a solid AA2 rated issuer right now.
Sean, this is John, can I interrupt? If you can share your screen, if you feel comfortable, you certainly can at this, if you want to go show us those documents, the presenter.
Sure, absolutely. What, what icon would that be, John?
From the left, you can share content, and then you can share screen or file or program.
Okay. How is, is that coming through at this point? Okay, wonderful, thank, thank you, John. Well, moving from the rating, we were able to share that with bidders. The sale was conducted this morning, and we ended up getting six bids on the originally sized $6,250,000 issue. And if you look at the next two pages, which is the bid tabulation, you'll see very aggressive bidders from a lot of the Midwest, common bidders on this type of debt issue. Northland Securities, Piper, Baird, BOK Bankers Bank. And you'll also see a bid from an entity in Tennessee, FHN Financial Capital Markets, that we, we see springing up on Wisconsin issues on a fairly regular basis. You'll, you'll also notice the bids, you look at the TIC, that the, the results are, the, the bids are fairly tight. The first couple especially, Piper and Northland. But the winning bid was from Northland Securities out of Minneapolis, and they did partner up with DA Davidson that has a strong presence in Iowa and in, in Colorado, I think as well. So, very strong bid. Now, what I'd like to, with that best bid, I'd like to take you to exhibit one. And this was an exhibit that we showed the council previously when we talked about the pre-sale report. In the middle of the page, the pre-sale report, we had projected interest rates of about 2.18% on a TIC basis, all-inclusive, with other costs associated with the debt at about 2.3. And with the winning bid today from Northland, the interest rate is that 1.59 with an all-inclusive of 1.73. The other item I'd highlight for the council is the bid we'd received from Northland Securities included a large premium. And what that means, many of you probably already know this, but what they're doing is they're paying us more than we're asking for. And the reason they're doing that is for their resale of the bonds, and I don't know if you can see my hand icon here, they want to attach higher interest rates so they can turn around and sell them more effectively from their standpoint to their customers on the secondary market. So they're willing to pay us a premium in order to provide a bid that has those higher coupons. And when you balance the premium with the coupons that they're providing us, that's where you come up with that TIC, and you blend that price they're paying with the interest rates they're charging us in terms of comparing the bids with other bidders and the net impact to the city. Now, what's nice about what we had this year is we're able to take that premium and use it to pay off the outstanding principal on the short-term issue that was done for the police station.
We lost you, Sean. Hey, John? We lost, Sean.
No, I, I, I'm hearing you guys, am I back on?
There we go.
Now you're back, just since it was getting exciting.
Yeah. We were, where I was finished, and if, if I lost you before this, please let me know, but we're able to issue less bonds, $5,740,000, rather than the $6,250,000 that we had planned, and still able to finance the refinancing of the two issues, the fire truck and the, the police station. So, where they charge us, the coupon's a little bit higher, but they're paying us more upfront. We have a little more interest, but we issue less debt, and the net impact is a lower overall cost to the city than what we had anticipated in the pre-sale report, which is very, very good news. The other benefit from that was we were able to, in the last exhibit, save more money on the refunding of the 2017 trust fund loan. We had projected savings in the $77,000, and as you can see on that exhibit, I don't think you can see my screen right now, maybe, but, oh, there it is. You can save over, we're saving over $117,000 with the, with the refunding, which is, again, great, great news. So, tonight's action to lock into the bid from Northland Securities would be approving the resolution prepared by the city's bond council Quarles and Brady. It locks into the interest rates, they would become fixed, and only action of the council at a later date, and that's 2028 or later. You could pay off the issue in full or refinance if lower interest rates are available, but otherwise, the rates would remain fixed for the 20-year period. But before taking any action on that resolution, if the council has any questions on the pre-sale report or the rating or the sale process, I'd be happy to answer those, as I'm sure Scott and Sarah would be as well.
Sean, I've got a quick question, if I could, and maybe you, maybe you mentioned this, but can we, do, are we able to prepay this later? Why, why we would, I would never know, but are we able to prepay this later, or what's the, what's the period before we could refund this if we want to do?
You bet. It's, it's a 20-year fixed issue, so the final maturity is in 2040. Between now, 2020, and March of 2028, we cannot prepay, but starting on March, of, March 1st of 2028, through the end of the life of the issue, the city can prepay in whole or in part, if you choose.
Sure. And again, I don't know that we ever would, but it's just on all of these, I'd like to just make sure we have the option if for some reason came up, but.
Thank you. You, you bet.
Sean or John, maybe you can unshare Sean's screen, and I think the, Mayor, you got the resolution that the council is taking up as to page 280 of the packet.
Right, and Mr. Mayor, would it be appropriate for me to amend my motion and change it to, if I understand it correctly, in general obligation bonds? Am I understanding that correctly?
You are.
Okay, well then, I, I would like to can I move to amend my motion?
Yeah, you can amend, since it's your motion, you can amend it with
Okay.
as presented in the sale, sale report.
Okay, I would amend it to include the amount as presented in the sales report.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I think you're muted.
There we go.
Sorry.
We can.
So, was there any questions on this one, comments?
No.
Okay, so Christie, we have a just a second on the resolution awarding the sale of to the bid the general obligation corporate fund. The general obligation corporate funds.
Okay, this vote is on the amendment of the amount. Is that correct? I just want to make sure.
Do it, well, that's what we, do we need to, do we need to vote on the amendment?
No, to clear, to clarify that the, the motion is, can stand as the motioner made it. Well, you, you're, if you vote yes, you're approving the sale of the bonds.
At, at the $5,740,000.
Yeah, the amount reflected in the sale report, correct.
Okay.
Thank you. We'll start with Mr. Plunkett.
Hi.
Gagne.
Hi.
Set.
Hi.
Downing.
Hi.
Beerstead.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thanks, Christie. Um, the next one is a resolution ratifying the chief of police proclamation. I'll take a motion on this.
Mr. Mayor. I have to, um, what's the word? I, I can't vote on this because it directly relates to my work position.
Okay.
Abstain.
So, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the resolution ratifying the chief of police proclamations.
First, second, are there any questions?
I'll just give my, uh, example. I'm a direct seller, so that's the portion that I am not, uh, I'm abstaining from the whole thing.
Anybody else have anything? Hey, Chris, first and second, on the resolution ratifying the chief of police proclamation, council is abstaining.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, who was the second at my end?
I was, Todd.
Did you get that?
No, I did not. I'm s-
It was Todd.
Yes.
Beerstead.
Okay. Okay, we'll start with Ms. Odine.
Yes.
Downing.
Hi.
Morse.
Hi.
Watson.
Hi.
Beerstead.
Hi.
Plunkett. Thank you.
Next, excuse me, next we'll go on to the administrative report. If anybody has any questions for Scott?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for Scott.
Yep, go ahead.
Please speak about, um, what our police chief and our cities doing in regards to, uh, George Floyd and the police brutality that we've seen and how our city is addressing it.
I can speak, and I believe that the chief is available also, um, voted in as a presenter, but, um, internally, the city staff has, has, uh, completed the initial review of our existing policy manuals. Um, we've, uh, done a review of our, the 21st Century Policing Task Force, um, in relation to our, um, our policies. We've also reviewed the eight can't wait, um, campaign, um, that's, that's related to police, um, policies. So we're looking to make sure that, um, those policies are consistent with what we've got in our policy manual, which they are. Um, and we've, um, the mayor obviously made a statement today in the, uh, his weekly video, um, in which we're working on education and, and then also transparency. So we've, uh, posted all the city's, uh, police officer policies. Um, and we'll be continuing to add the information regarding police training and, and other resources on there. Um, you know, as, as the administrator, the mayor and the administrator and the chief have had the opportunity to speak about what we've seen on the video and, and it's appalling. Um, it certainly isn't acceptable police behavior. It's frankly not acceptable human behavior. Um, so people can be assured that that's not, um, acceptable and that's not how our police are trained. Um, certainly the mayor, um, Chief Young, I don't, I think Chief Young is still on the attendees list.
Would you be willing to, uh, talk about eight can wait briefly, real, real quick, Scott?
Um, I can talk about it a little bit, sure. There's, there are some, um, I believe it's got different origins, but at least the, the format which I received it or I've reviewed it is through the ACLU. Um, and so it's eight policies that they recommend police implement, um, to, uh, policies that they believe are evidence-based and that will reduce the chance of, um, deaths or, uh, abuse in police custody. So, and I probably can't rattle them off, but I can look them up here, um.
We, we have the chief's answer to all those online too, right?
Um, we will be putting that online. We've, earlier today, we've provided the city council, the kind of the policy by policy, um, outlook on that. And so I can, I can briefly talk about that. But essentially, we've adopted, these eight policies have, um, in large part been adopted by our police for longstanding. So it's, there aren't, there aren't changes recommended to our policies based on what that campaign is calling for, because those are policies that we, we have in place. And certainly folks can, uh, take a look at those too. The public has the ability to look at those and, and see if they believe that that's consistent information with what they, they believe. But they, so the eight policies are ban chokeholds and strangleholds. Um, we, we do not, uh, train officers in that, and they're, um, is not included in our policies and they're acceptable, um, tactic. Um, we need to, in fact, to use that, you have to be intending deadly force. Um, escalation is required, um, so we're consistent with that. Um, one policy that's the most difficult to understand what the ACLU is looking for is the require warning before shooting. Um, so officers in our police department are trained that before they use deadly force, they have to reasonably believe there's no other option. Um, that does provide some difficulty as far as a verbal, um, verbal warning before shooting. The require exhausting all alternatives before shooting. Again, that is consistent with our policies. Um, a duty to intervene by all officers, that's in our policy. Um, meaning that, that each officer has, um, a responsibility when they're present or observing another officer using force beyond what's, um, objectively reasonable under the circumstance, they have to intercede, um, and that. Uh, we ban shooting at, at, um, moving vehicles. Again, the, the exception, um, is essentially to avert threat deadly force. But our policy is pretty clear that we don't believe that firing at a moving vehicle is effective. It requires comprehensive reporting, which the police department has in their policies, and also we have a, a use of, uh, required use of force continuum. So those are the eight things. I know it's difficult without kind of a visual, but, um, that's, that's the eight that can't wait. Um, and I would say, from my perspective as a lay layperson, um, or kind of some oversight, um, reviews policies, the only one that I think we're not strictly in, um, compliance with is the require warning before shooting. And again, that's, the only time a warning would not be required is, um, when it's just not feasible, um.
So Scott, quick question. Um, is there any specific policies that our police chief is reviewing currently?
Yeah, Gordon would have to, Chief Young would, would need to speak to that, but I would say that there's a regular review of policies that are going on, but I'm not, I'm not aware of a specific policy um, other than perhaps the body cam, um, body cam policy that he's looking at.
Is, uh, Chief Police Chief, is Police Chief available to speak to that real quick?
Yes, can you see me, um, councilman? Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Um, first off, I would like to agree with, uh, the city administrator that the, uh, video, um, was appalling of George Floyd's death. Um, those officers' tactics that were used would not be tolerated in River Falls and are against our policy, as he stated. Currently, uh, a lot of our policies are being reviewed, especially with the eight can't wait. And Lexipol, our policy provider, is also reviewing, reviewing their policies, um, in connection with eight can't wait. So, um, yeah, all of our policies and, um, and, and that's a yearly process too. Uh, we, we just don't issue a, a policy and then, um, not go back to it. Uh, we, we have a yearly review of all of our policies, make sure that they meet the community's needs and the police department needs.
Thank you.
Otherwise, Mayor, in regards to the, the city ministry report, I guess we want to just reiterate our appreciation, um, on behalf of staff, or the support the council has provided, their flexibility in adjusting all these things they're adjusting to, um, changes in our communication strategies with you and, um, you know, accesses, we've been trying to provide you that virtual access, but certainly, um, that always isn't a substitute for in-person, um, access, but, uh, appreciate the patience and leadership the council has shown and and helping the community get through, um, uh, some, some challenging times, um, that we're going through. I don't know if Ms. Odine had a question. Mayor, I think you're muted.
Um, I, I didn't have a question so much as a comment, that I, uh, very much appreciate that the, um, police department's policies and procedures, all 400 pages of them, are now on, um, the city's website. So, um, anyone who's got any questions about, um, what those are can take a look for themselves.
Yep. Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep. Go ahead, Chris. Yeah. Yep, go ahead.
Chief, um, let's just say, um, an officer has a use of force, um, and it, the department, or an unjustified use of force, is there second chances, third, fourth chances in the city of River Falls um, for that officer if it was determined that it was unjustified and, um, an imminent need to use that force?
I, I guess that's kind of a loaded question because it, it depends on, on the officer and, uh, past, uh, accountability problems that we've had with them, if, if there was any, but also the extent of the injury that, that was caused.
So there's disciplinary action if it, if it's an unjustified use?
Yes, most definitely. Yes.
Fantastic.
And it could lead up to termination.
Awesome. You know, Gordy, I, I want to commend you and your officers in the city of River Falls. Um, I've heard nothing but good things from the general community. Um, you guys do a great job of representing our community. Um, and, and I think you guys have a lot of support and, you know, I think the community needs to rally, rally, ra- rally around the folks that are hurting and, and suffering, but at the same point, let's, uh, support our local police that do a great job protecting us day in and day out. Um, we have, um, according to the National Law Enforcement Memorial, 800,000 police officers in the country. The occurrences that we see on social media and around the country are a very small subset. Um, and yes, those, those folks need to be disciplined, those folks need to be trained in proper use. Um, but let's, let's remember the people that do a great job protecting our communities and our families. And remember that they are our neighbors, they are our family members, they're our brothers and sisters. So thanks, Gordy, for all you do.
Thank you.
And I would like to add, if I could, Mayor.
Yes.
Um, based on our actions tonight, I think you could tell the guys and the gals that, that work for you, Gordy, that we're not planning to defund the police department.
Thank you very much. I love this city. I want to stay.
Anybody else have anything? Okay, I just have a couple, uh, board appointments. I'd like to reappoint, um, Rebecca Ferguson to the library board through July of '23. To appoint Carrie Heinzleman to the library board through July of '23. And I'd like to appoint Craig Hofflin to the plan commission through July of '23.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we accept your appointments.
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
I'm sorry, Christie. Christie, go ahead if you want to do your roll call. I apologize.
Start with Mr. Gagne.
Hi.
Plunkett.
Hi.
Beerstead.
Hi.
Sorry, Mr. Morissette.
Hi. Hi.
Thank you. Downing.
Hi.
Odine.
Hi.
Watson.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thanks, Christie.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
First and second, um, all in favor of adjourning?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay. Thanks, everybody. Everybody, all the work.
Great, thanks.
Have a good evening.
Thank you, John. Great job. Thanks, Chris.